Okay, if we could stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, our agenda says that we're gonna have an appointment with the auditor. I think Ron might be running a little late.
It looks like he is. I tried to call about fifteen minutes.
So, so I'm going to move on and we'll, we'll, we'll come back after, when, when Ron gets here. I'll go to number three, amendments to the agenda.
Two today, if it's okay with the board. First, I'd like to put, amend the agenda to add appointments with tenants for water and sewer agreements. As two A.
As two A.
And then under new business D, add liquor license approval for special permits.
Okay. I need, uh, let's, let's do two different motions on that. Do I have a motion for the first amendment, the appointment with the tenants for water and sewer?
I'll make a motion if we have a second to that.
Know what we're doing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Can I get a motion for liquor license special permit?
I'll make a motion. We added liquor license special permit to the agenda.
I will second that motion.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
No other amendments? We're gonna, we're gonna move on. Approval of the minutes from July eighth. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Um, discussion after the motion, right?
After the second, yep.
I have a motion to approve those minutes.
Do I have a second?
I have a second, yeah.
Okay, uh, any discussion?
One quick thing. In parking lot, the first line says manager Gunter said to not make changes. What was that in reference to? I'm sorry if that's self-evident.
I know what you're talking about.
Don't remove anything.
Yeah, we, that was part of the discussion on the swap shop and I, I are, and I, we have transfer station there. And I think I asked Joe the question, are we ready to take that off? And he's saying not yet. He still wants to do a little more work with the swap shop. Is what that pertains to.
Perhaps an amendment to say manager Gunter said to not make changes to parking lot items? Or parking lot agenda items or... Uh, sorry, I don't mean to create work for you.
Nope. Cause I have a couple, so. Is there any other discussion from board than that?
I was thinking we should, oh, on that, that item?
I, I had, I had on page three under VCDC approval. Where it said, uh, that I gave the town sixty dollars, sixty thousand dollars to rehab the former Skyline building. I, I don't want it to look like we're gonna, that's awful little money for, it's gonna take a lot more than that to rehab the Skyline building.
Just for the study.
It's to do a visa, in front of that, it's, I mean, what it was is sixty thousand dollars to do a feasibility study to rehab the former Skyline building. That way it, it, it's a better descriptor, so people don't think we're, we're rehabbing it for sixty thousand dollars is all.
Yes.
On that same page, under the two minutes for public comments. I'm pretty sure Mr. Fraser was talking about globes being smashed versus headstones. He talked about the, the, the light lit, the globe, the lighted globe, the eternal light globe that was smashed.
Yep.
Uh, so I, I just, if he was here, he'd be going, wait a minute, the headstones are, are fine. It's the globes that, that were smashed a couple of times.
Yeah. I do, I do feel like I recall some discussion of gravestones being defaced as well, but I agree that that was the more important part of Mr. Fraser's comments.
So can I get him with those changes? Do you have some more changes?
The date.
The date. Oh, yes, the minutes show March eleventh instead of, instead of Ju- uh, July?
It says March eleven for Pete's sake.
July eight, yeah.
You were close, that was close.
Do you think I cut my taste?
So, I'll entertain a motion with the change of date. The clarification on the parking lot. The feasibility study added, after the, after the sixty thousand dollars. And the globes added to Mr. Fraser's two minutes for comment.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Yes, I can do that.
Rich, second sat? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good.
Just, just a minute. Did you mean to, to, uh, take away the first motion?
Yes. I will.
That isn't necessary, if I may say so. You can approve as amended or approve as corrected.
Okay. So we're, let's, let's approve it as, as correct.
No, you've done it now.
I don't get a mulligan on this?
So it was Chad and Rich.
Chad and Rich. Very good. I think we have our minutes taken care of. Okay, department head reports.
I do not have an official report. I was gone to Milwaukee before the week and I came back and I had event training in the academy the last two days. On mandatory training, so I wouldn't know what I had done yesterday, so I will try to get caught up. I don't have anything. Last thing I went through was called A-Ride. It was very difficult. I was worried, but I backed something up.
What, what was that, A-Ride?
A-Ride. It's what it is. It's the next level up. So the state has put a mandated anybody certified within two years from the, that day you have to go. So you have your standardized DUI. And then A-Ride is the next section. It's called the DEC program and it's one step below DRE. So the goal is every officer in the state will be able to do A-Ride and that's to take it to the next level to address possible impairment by drugs. Since the legalization of marijuana, we've seen an increase in drug driving. And what we find a lot of officers, not just here, but across the state, they kind of shy away from the marijuana piece because warrants. And it's just not real clear, like what's impairment, what's not. So this is to enhance enforcement and try to, um, head some of that drug use off. Not just marijuana, but it adds in the prescribed drugs and really the call to parent. So it was a tough training. It was worth it. Stressful, except stressful. If you didn't pass, you had to come back to you again. And so, but so far everybody's taken and has passed, so it's a slow process. We have two more going in August. So eventually everybody will be caught up.
Okay.
What did you call it, A-Ride?
It's called A-Ride, A-Ride, capital letters.
I just got the text from the auditor and he says his internet is down and he couldn't get here. He apologizes, but he'll be here on August fifth.
Okay. Any other questions for the chief?
Milwaukee? Is it good?
I've never been there and I was apprehensive because here Milwaukee is a, when I think of Detroit, it might not be a less desirable city. And I guess Milwaukee was beautiful. I recommend anybody hasn't been there this time of year. It was like driving around Lenz Falls, which I liked about our, it's a large city, but moving through the city, there wasn't congestion. It was very pretty river down through the middle, but if you haven't been, I would recommend.
Never, never even thought about it.
Not me either. We rode, actually rode up to the Green, Green Bay Peninsula, which is, it looked a lot like here without the, um, the mountains. It was more like rolling hills, but it felt like rural.
Good. Okay, uh, Joe. Doing the rest of it?
I'm doing the rest today. Oh, quick update on Public Works. They, so we've closed down the building, which I'll mention later in my report. But we've closed down the building on Airport Road and Public Works has started moving their equipment and supplies to the new facility. Today they went and grabbed some extra shelving and again, they started moving. They've been hitting potholes, potholes in the sidewalk as well. They helped with the water leak on River Street. They dug that out, found the, found the leak and patched it back up. And they've been doing a lot of, a lot of equipment repair. We'll see that in the, in the warrant. And our guys have been really spending a lot of time on equipment, maintaining that stuff. Nothing from the sewer department today. Water department did take care of those three boil water notices that we had outstanding from Downstreet and then over on River Street. So those have all, but those are all buttoned up and the state has signed off on them. And nothing specific from the transfer station. I did talk to Shaden, he's reporting out to the state about the tonnage that we, that we send out. We have to report to the state for this. And they're estimating that the swap shop has saved about so far four tons in garbage going into the landfill. But it sounds like a lot, but we're, we're gonna, we're still tracking it. It's something we're now on our radar, so, um, I'm, I'm pretty proud of that. That was the goal. Do you know how that's tracked? How the swap shop is tracked? The reduction in tonnage, yeah. What, what is, how are they measuring that? So what we're watching is as compared to last month and as compared to last year. And then when the trend, or when the swap shop is open, did we see a dip? You know, cause you should see right on the, on the graph, you should see a dip at that point. But we'll see, it could be anomaly and anomaly. What, what percentage of the total tonnage would four tons represent, do you know, or whatever period? Yeah, I don't know the total tonnage, but I could find out. It would be... Next. And that's, that's what I got for those folks. From the manager's office, tax bills did go out last week and people have started paying. It looks like the state has reduced, and this is just what I've seen. I don't have any inside information. But it looks like the state has reduced their, um, school subsidy to the taxpayer. There, I forget what that's called, that little bit of money they give you. I've had a couple of people say that they didn't get as much as they did last year.
Homestead?
Homestead.
The homestead, the homestead, yeah.
That was, that was definitely less this year.
Yep. I mentioned we closed down the new facility. The building is, so we insured the building a couple of days. I called VLCT. The building is insured. It was insured the day we took possession. Water and electricity is now in the town's name. I still need to get a phone and internet service, but the guys aren't there, so it's not, um, not the end of the world that that hasn't happened yet. Uh, I reached out, and this will be a discussion for the next meeting, I think, but I wanted to let the board know. Uh, I reached out to Castleton and Polley to talk about the, I'm gonna say this wrong. The two hundred and fiftieth anniversary, the semi, semi-quintcentennial of America. I asked them would they be interested in going in with Fairhaven to have a big event? Not just like have some little town stuff here and there, so. They're talking to their boards this week and then next week, and then we'll see what, what they say. Seven unions has been posted. That can be closed on at the end of August. For the auditor who was supposed to be here, he'll be here at the next meeting. We scheduled the meeting, Terry and I scheduled the meeting for August twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight to start that process for fiscal year twenty-five. We talked to, we talked to Ron, the auditor Ron. Um, we want to be done with this in November. We want to get back on track. We have the staff capacity now to do it. So that's, that's the goal, is to get back, Fairhaven back on that November deadline like we have done in years past. We did have a great meet and greet with the governor, if anybody had attended. Lot of representatives and just a good, kind of a good vibe all around for that one. Heat pumps are still being installed on the second floor. They're in operation on the first floor. We did have trouble with the clerk's office. It's still, it's blowing warm a little bit, but, um, they're working on that. Downtown water line, they hung that pipe across the bridge from south side to north side. They should be out of there this week, so we won't have construction downtown anymore. Same day we met with the governor, we did have a, a small meet and greet over at the Skyline building to talk about reactivating that place. Also, a lot of good, good positive feedback. We had the right people at the right places, um, who can help us. And let's see. Late August, uh, we should see paving down on, uh, South Main. So we'll see that coming through. For where they cut, where they made the road cuts and laid the water pipe. And then we started looking at, so I know we had the, we discussed where to place the salt shed at the new facility. But the discussion around putting it in after doing more research, the discussion and decision to put that in the visitor parking lot? Do we know what I mean by visitor parking lot?
Up there?
On the outside of the gate.
When you're outside the gate, when you're parked, yep.
That space is not feasible. We, we don't reach the setbacks. We'd have to pave over, or we'd have to pave over non-impervious. We'd have to pave over impervious surface, excuse me. And it's right by the wetland, so we'd be approaching on a wetland buffer. So I do have that. The only space that we really, that is seemingly feasible is in the back of the facility next to the existing outbuilding. So if you can see, so there's that little outbuilding way back in the corner. Now if you can see the big red rectangle, not to scale. As you see the wetland stop here and there's the property boundary here. So that gives us the buffer to the wetland and then it gives us the setbacks for the, um, for the property line. The other piece, which I'll pass around, it's a little smaller. Wetland is right there. Property boundary is right at where we're gonna put it, so if you wanted to take a look.
That's at the airport.
It's at the, yeah, the airport facility. May I ask the question, um, since that wasn't the first choice of location, what are the perceived disadvantages of that location versus another location that was more favorable? So we wanted to put it out, um, up front originally, just so that way the tractor trailers would be able to come in and have access to it when they dumped, pretty much any time. Right, it was just open. But this, this, this space here seems to, it's, it's superior and it saves us almost thirty thousand dollars in, in paving. Yeah, so originally we were afraid that the, the water sloughing off the, sloughing off the parking lot might go right into the... But it's pitched more to the back corner, not towards that outbuilding. Like they wouldn't, they wouldn't grade the pavement to the outbuilding, which is not what they did. So, um, this seems to be the superior location. Um, I don't know if the board has any hurt burn about that, but that, we did some research and it's like... If it's feasible, yeah. Yeah. Saves us money, puts us on...
Salt's under the roof anyway. You're not gonna have runoff like, like you would if it...
Well, I was afraid of coming off the parking lot.
Yeah, but that can be...
But that's gonna, it's, it, they wouldn't, they wouldn't, they didn't grade the, the parking lot to go into the building. They graded it to go away from the building.
Okay.
Imagine that.
Of course, any other questions for?
Yeah, that's all I had for you today. Oh, no, that's not all I had for you today. Um, I'd like to introduce Erica Knott, our new recreation director.
Well, welcome.
Do you want to give an update?
Speech.
What update would you like?
About recreation? Anything on your mind?
Um, our program this summer is awfully small. Our numbers have dwindled. And I think it's just, it's two programs in one space, so it's boys and girls, so I'm operating along with Fairhaven Recreation. However, their numbers also seem to be a little smaller as well. I was informed that they have about thirty-five kiddos registered with them. And they have about forty-five kids registered, but given that it's summer, and the numbers fluctuate week to week, vacations, camps, all those different things. So I don't think we've really reached over thirty kids in one day, so it's a very small group than what we're used to. We had to switch our style of camp a little bit and separate some materials to equal, well, I should say, maybe easier to, um, do inside days. Instead of having to transfer everything back up in the rain and back down in the rain. So thankfully, we're able to order enough supplies to kind of split between inside and outside, so we don't have to do as much of that. Thankfully, we've only had one inside day. Makes it a lot easier. We've been taking the kiddos to story hours with the library. They've enjoyed that. Fridays are field trip days. Beach this Friday, so we'll see if the weather will look out for us or not, but it's a good turnout.
I regretfully don't know that much about the summer programming. I did look at the website not too long ago, so perhaps there's more information on there and I can educate myself. But just generally, is it, um, what age groups, uh, attend the summer camp and what days is it?
So Monday through Friday, uh, we do eight-thirty to one-thirty. Eight-thirty to nine is breakfast. That is all free, provided for the program, along with lunch later on the day. Um, and then... Sorry, what was the other part of the question?
Um, the age groups there.
Age groups, yes. Um, so five to twelve. That is a little wonky. I have to clarify a little bit more with that because we have, in the handbook it says grades going into kindergarten to sixth grade. And then the sixth graders are all going into seventh grade. And they're like, but I have a sixth grader, I'm not going into sixth grade, but there's still twelve. And so I said, well, you're at that fine line. I'll just have to get some more clarification. It could be a matter of like insurance purposes or any of those things. And I know like teachers have specific certifications for certain age groups as well. So I said, well, I'll have to get some cert, you know, clarification maybe for next summer moving forward and adapt as we need to. Uh, we don't have a lot of those older kiddos right now, but I do have a lot of middle schoolers that are like, can I come down? Can I come down? It's a public space. You are absolutely welcome to come down. The meals are free. That's fine. However, I'm not responsible if something happens because I do not have you as a registered participant. But it seems like that middle school group really is looking for something to do. And I can have some junior counselors. They are not paid. They have to pay their own way for field trips, but they are there to kind of fill in that role and help their counselors and learn so that eventually they can move up and then become a paid teenage, you know, high school student counselor. So we have some interest. It's just a matter of, we don't have a whole lot of kids. I don't need a bunch of junior counselors. I already have eight senior counselors I have to work with, so.
Um, and...
Do you need to do the lunch?
Yeah, so they do the lunch program at the school, all free. And then they also pack us lunches for our field trips to go, so that's nice.
And need the, um, participants be enrolled at Fairhaven Grade School or can they be residents of other towns? How does that work?
They can be residents of other towns. So, um, our resident fee is, you know, smaller than our non-resident, but from what I gather, we do have some kiddos from like White Hall, New York, and they're saying fifty dollars is really not that bad, especially for their older kiddo.
Is that a week or for the whole summer?
That week for the week.
Okay.
Yep, for the week. And then there is a discount if you have multiple children.
Okay.
So a lot of families actually love that factor, even for our local kiddos, because then it's just ten dollars per extra kid. So it's nice for them. And then, um, I actually do need to reach out to the American Legion. They've been so gracious to sponsor some kiddos during the summer who they may not have the financial needs to send a kiddo, but really would like to. And I actually have a family that just reached out saying, my, my child really wants to come. How can we make this work? I said, don't worry. I will figure it out. I will contact the American Legion. I know Jeff Eaton has reached out to me during softball season saying, hey, you kiddos need anything for sponsorship, supplies, equipment, any of that? Reach out to them and we'll make it happen. So like, this is great. And I don't know that a lot of families understand that, that those services are available, that, you know, those resources are... We try to advertise that when it's like coming across, but there's so much information and I'm trying not to inundate parents with all of that, but...
It's really rather inexpensive. I mean, you can't hire a babysitter for one day, but they pay for a week.
A couple of hours, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, thirty dollars for the week isn't horrible. It's not, so.
Great, thank you.
Good.
Thanks for filling me in.
Well, yes.
Just as a matter of point. The small number of kids, I don't think it's lack of interest. I think if I remember correctly, our numbers at the school have gone down drastically. If I remember correctly, I believe that they're going to be down to one kindergarten and one first grade, maybe, I, I, something to that effect.
We will have one kindergarten class. First grade's okay. First grade's okay. They have kids. Kindergarten, just I...
Is that?
I just finished, um, my position as an IA with the school. Um, and so I know kindergarten, they only have about seventeen kiddos coming in for kindergarten.
Just enough for one class. So I just wanted to point out, I don't think it's a lack, a lack of interest.
It's just number, it's just the number.
The numbers are just kind of...
The kiddos, yep. Good.
Well, that's, that's everywhere.
Yes.
Well, well, welcome aboard. We, we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Right? Okay, anything else, Joe, or?
No, sir.
Old business, it says we have none. New business, uh, you've touched on the three-town fireworks for America semi-quintcentennial?
Yeah. That was probably, so I, I pretty much gave away my, uh, my whole spiel. Other than the fact that, so we were, the, the three towns, myself, the managers and Castleton and Polley kind of spitballed ideas of where it could be, could be held. And Castleton's gonna reach out to Castleton College to see if they'll let us use their space. Cause we just don't, the, the airport's big. I don't think we have enough parking and space for three towns worth of people. That doesn't seem feasible to me and I don't want to make it a, I don't want it to turn out poorly. So that's, that's pretty much where we're sitting now and, and there will be more to come.
Yeah, more stuff happening. Good. If there's no other questions for Joe on that?
Are we gonna have money in the budget for the two-fiftieth? I mean, the historical society has been talking a lot about, it would be great to have, um, bunting all over town like we're used in the old days. We have lots of pictures of when bunting was on all the buildings and we don't normally have a Fourth of July parade and several people have said, can we have a Fourth of July parade? I probably could ask Dave Mallory because he was vital in, um, the two-hundredth. But finding, you know, our town's oldest citizen, the youngest citizen, all those kinds of different events that we had for the two-hundred and fifty, uh, the two-hundredth celebration, so. I didn't live for them, but...
It's, it's a good question for when we go into budget season and talk about, you know, that's why I made a little note to myself. Okay, is there some budget money for this? Do you, do you have a rough idea what that, when they did the two-hundredth, what's...
No, I'd say, like I said, I'm...
You know, I'm, oh, okay, but I, but, uh, there's nothing there. Don't let me misspeak, Joe, but there's nothing there now. We would need to discuss and put something there, probably under our special events type of a, when I look.
Yeah, it sounds like more of a discussion during budget season, maybe not, not for the fireworks.
Right.
I think maybe, I think maybe somebody ought to get some sort of an idea of what we're talking about before budget season gets through.
Yeah, right, because I wouldn't know how much, we, if you get a general, if there's a general idea, like you mentioned, parade or... We know from doing Memorial Day parade, what it costs us to do Memorial Day parade. And so if, are we looking to budget an additional parade or what, what is it?
From Memorial Day to the Fourth of July.
Yep.
I mean, if we only want to do one parade that for the summer. But yeah, I mean, it'd be, just be nice to have some idea of how much that's going to cost. I, I don't know, but we can start looking into it.
Okay, that's it, that's it.
I mean, we can ask Polley how much their parade costs, because obviously they have much larger parade than we do.
Is, is there, I mean, I know you were just spitballing this, but is there a consensus already that reached that we would prefer to have a Fourth of July parade to a Memorial Day parade amongst the people we're talking about?
People have come to me and asked about making sure we, you know, only because it's the two-hundred and fiftieth celebration is the Fourth of July. So that's why people were asking. Um, I don't see why we couldn't have both. The, the first, Memorial Day is mostly, in the past, going back, the American Legion has taken the lead with some leadership too on, you know, the, the town, you know, um, supporting, supporting it and obviously.
Yes, sure.
So perhaps this is something, uh, later in the year, we can add to the budget or add to the agenda instead of perhaps right now during the fireworks discussion. So that way we have a, a deep, deep discussion about it.
Yeah, we need, and we should probably get it, an agenda item, so it's warned, so we can get...
Sure.
I, I bet there's some, a lot of great ideas and people, I appreciate the enthusiasm and the fact... I, I bet there's some, a lot of great ideas and people, I appreciate the enthusiasm and the fact, and the question. That says, now we know, you've put the bug in our ear.
Yeah, we're at eleven bucks a county.
For the budget.
And I'll go quick.
So we're gonna hear more on the fireworks.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Joe on that? Updated junk ordinance. I think everyone's got a copy, right?
Yes, sir. So um, briefly about the junk ordinance, this is something that the. Uh, EDDP, formerly the Economic Development Committee, um, had taken up as a project to rework and, and. Help improve so that way we can, so that way this ordinance has a little bit more teeth to it. If you look around the town, there are a few properties that have been let go. The leaves are just piled up on the lawn, the garbage is piled up outside, the weeds are as high as me. Um, and there's just stuff scattered all over the yard. This ordinance allows the town, uh, it better defines what's considered nuisance and what's not, well, what is. Um, and then it allows the town to clean these properties at the cost of the owner, which is, um, new to our ordinance. And it's, I think it, it adds the teeth to, to the ordinance that we really need. And Glenn, Glenn was instrumental in this. I, he may remember more than I do, but that's kind of the important piece for me.
If, if I was listening to the pitch for this update on the junk ordinance, I'd say, okay, if I had the old one here and what you're proposing here. Not a lot got changed between the two ordinances. The title, where you start off with the Town of Fairhaven, uh, ordinance regulating the storage of junk and junk motor vehicles. We added junk and junk motor vehi-, motor, it was just junk motor vehicles the fir-, and the first time. So we said junk and then we went down and we helped explain a little, that a little bit more from what it was. The only other thing that changed in there is we added two elements. Uh, we added the element of, uh. Leaves and in the fall, sometimes you get a whole bunch of leaves that, uh, if they're not picked up and, and they. We go into the, uh, late November, they get in, they get into our storm drains and clog our storm drains, so we, we tried to get something to address that. We wanted to address, uh, grass that, that gets very high and isn't mowed. I can tell you that was the biggest stumbling block for us. We went and checked with legal. And even though there's some element about grass that's, we tied the grass and the height around the junk. Saying that if it's around the junk, if it's greater than fifteen inches, it needs to be cut, but if you. This is not an ordinance that lets you drive down the street and say, okay, that, that grass is three feet high right there. I want it mowed. Uh, we need, we need to come up, they, we were given guidance that we need to come up with a, a. Grass ordinance is about, for lack of a, a better term for it. So, um, that's not there, but we also, what this did, the reason we added the junk. Is sometimes we'll get some homes that, and some of the ones I think of are likely, we had one on Grave Street where. The people left and left a whole bunch of garbage and everything, uh, there. And they, they're like in California and their garbage is sitting here and it's sitting here all summer and the next year. Well, this allows us to take, get it removed and then bill back whoever owns that place. So that we can get at some of those, because again, the reason, a lot of this is from a health and safety standpoint. If you've got too much real garbage, you get the vermin that comes along with it. And we were getting, we were hearing from people quite a bit about, uh, hey, look, I wish you would. You do more around that kind of junk, not just junk motor vehicles. So, um, those were, and Chad, Seal and Chad, and it was also on, on the committee. If I missed something, feel free to jump in.
No, I think you've covered, covered the changes nicely.
Legal suggested might not go in that particular ordinance. He said you, you covered it in the health and safety ordinance. But we did receive a lot of. Feedback from neighbors, especially about rats and things like that, so. That's why we really started looking at the garbage, you know, junk garbage.
Mm-hmm. Any questions about it from our board members, other board members?
So the enforcement of each individual, um, or the enforcement of the policy. Is upon the select board in each case? So, uh, am I understanding that correctly? Within thirty days from the date of mailing of a written notice by the select board of any violation of this ordinance? That, that makes it sound like, who, well.
You know, if you're wondering, do you go knock on the doors, the select board member? No.
Not so much as in, in each individual case that there is a violation being made, does it need to then be brought before the select board for us to then issue a notice? That's how that seems to.
It should be changed to select board, town manager or designate.
Okay.
Right now, our department does the junk ordinance.
Okay.
We send out the letters, we meet with people, we try to give them X amount of time to resolve the problem, then we write them. Vermont Municipal Complaint, and then they have the opportunity to contest that in front of a judicial office.
Okay.
Through the traffic board.
So I, am I, am I reading this incorrectly or does it feel like that is necessary to clarify?
Uh, so, no, it doesn't need to be clarified. It's understood that the select board is, the chief and myself are the, the. Designees of the select board.
Okay.
We, we exact, or we're, we execute the policies of the select board and the ordinances, so. That, that hasn't changed in this ordinance. We've always, the chief has always sent out the tickets and the letters.
It does leave, are you looking at A under enforcement?
Enforcement A, yeah.
Enforcement A?
Written notice by the select board of any.
Because I think later, under D, uh, the town constables and law enforcement officers shall be designated enforcement officers. Uh, said designees shall issue the Vermont Municipal com-, com-, a complaint ticket. And show, uh, shall be the appearing officer at any hearing, but if all, go ahead.
The only thing I would like to add is if you add. Constables, law enforcement or designate, because technically that should fall to the help officer. The help officer can be, or has a particular violation number, but it can be a, you could. Hire the animal control officer to go do code enforcement. I don't want to say code, the ordinance or. You could at some point decide to appoint, uh, an ordinance officer just to handle those type of things. So if you add designate, that, that. We have a redneck, the chief writes it just us two.
Mm-hmm.
And we do primarily do that, but I just was thinking long-term, whatever you.
Because when I, when I look at these, because when we look at an ordinance, we get an opportunity to take, we took the words that were there. But it's a great opportunity to update the words after we've had time and I think that's what, what the chief is telling us.
Yeah, basically it already says it in Article one. Enforcement officer means any constable or law enforcement officer appointed by the select board.
Yeah, I'd like to add or designate.
Right. And. I think that's.
Then that, like you said, other times the help officer can write those violations, or again, if you.
You don't see, because I don't see them having to go back to attorney just because of the board designate.
No, 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 I think the board has the ability to point their.
And, and if that, if that helps in clarification and, and they're, great, we're, we're looking at the document when you get a chance to look at it. Anything else in the document that jumps out at you?
Tell, explain to me again the specifics around overgrown grass. So as, as written in two C, it sounds like it's specifically grass grown over fifteen inches within ten feet of junk. But it doesn't use the term overgrown grass in two C. We do then later in three A refer to overgrown grass. Which would suggest that that is the definition of overgrown grass, but it doesn't feel like it's perfectly clear to me.
Yes.
Also, can I just clarify, are we, are we voting on this tonight?
The intent.
Or not, okay.
No, you'll have.
This is your, this is your first chance to see that it's now passed through the, the group that was working on it. Back here, years ago. When we talked, I was the best, the reason I answered you the way I did.
Okay.
When we talked to our attorney. Uh, they were not comfortable with us being real clear and saying, grass over this, don't care if it's near junk or not, it's gotta be cut. They said, you need, you'd be better off, you, you, enforcement wise and everything, having a separate ordinance just on the grass. But as long as we're talking junk and we, we, he was comfortable with. The, the C where it talks located within ten feet of any junk or junk motor vehicle. Anything over fifteen inches should be cut. Because you don't know in that junk, whether that's a, a frame to a, a vehicle. Or piles of garbage that's got all kinds of vermin going to it. What is the logic there? But, uh, it, it doesn't spell it out real clear. Because it wasn't to include someone who's got some very high grass on their front lawn. And say, you got, it's more than fifteen inches. I've got my ruler. Here, here you go. Now we, that's not what this ordinance does. It was meant to be. A little ambiguous.
And I, I apologize for my kind of abruptness and directness just now. I thought we were about to vote on this. And provided there's still time for review and revision, I feel much less, uh, sensitivity around the specifics.
No.
I'll just say that.
No, we, what we've done at this, where we are in the process here, probably well over a year ago, it was sent to the EDC. To see if they could come up with something, knowing that when we worked through, came up with it, got it looked at by legal. We'd come back here to the board and say, okay, here's the change, either, either a new ordinance and we decided, rather than writing a new ordinance. Let's take the one that exists and let's just tweak it a little bit, uh, and, and bring it up to date. Now that it's back here, you're seeing it for the first time, I would, I would look that we. I'd, I'd say that we take the input that we have here, we tweak it, clean it up again and then. Come back and see if it's something. Just for the process and correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, the process is even once we say yes. There's a, a, a process of it has to be for so many days out there, someone can put a petition together. I, I mean, we can, we could get people to put a petition together and says, no, we don't want a junk ordinance. We like high grass and junk. I, I mean, I, I'm just saying that for, or whatever, uh, for a lot of reasons. Uh, that, uh, that someone might come back. So there's a process, but first, the next step in the process is for us to look at the, some, the tweaking, so. What I would, if, if you haven't got any other changes right now, I'd just ask. That before we meet again, we send those changes to, to Joe so we can incorporate them in.
Okay.
So that when we come back, we're saying, okay. Here's the second pass at, at, at this here.
But are, so are all further, um, edits going to be made, um, by you directly, Joe, or will they go to the EDC? It sounds like they were.
We've, we've done our work. We're, we've said, here's what we're proposing. And now, now you, you do your thing.
Okay.
Yep. Chad, no, nothing? Nope?
No, no, I'm good.
So we good there? Rich, any?
Good. Landowner buildings, tenants. The bottom, the, the, the bottom line is the owner is responsible in the end. I'm thinking that's the way it should be.
We usually start with the tenant, and if we don't get a result, we go to the actual property.
Okay. Right. That makes sense.
Good. No other questions? We're gonna move on to, uh, appointment to the zoning board of adjustment?
Yeah, so I popped that in there just as a placeholder, just in case there was people clamoring at the door and turns out there's not. So, um, there's really no action tonight on that.
Okay. Liquor license, special permit application request, D.
Alright, so this, this is a special, this is a liquor license request for a special event. Um, we've had some requests to, to add beer and wine to a couple of our events. Um, and this particular event is at the, um, concerts, not in the concerts, but outside the fence, kind of behind the concerts. Um, the idea is to bring, try to attract, um, a younger population to our events. Um, right now the concerts, they do bring in, you know, some, some younger families, but the goal is to bring in some of my, um. Like schoolteacher age, working class folks that, hey, I just want to go out, sit and have, have a glass of wine, listen to some music. Um, so that's the idea behind this. Um, and there are four dates that, uh, there are permits for.
I've, uh, I've been working at a concert for four or five years now and I've never heard of that request before. I've never had anybody ask. I don't know where that's coming from.
It's, we have a, a pop-, the population's changing.
Yeah.
No, I know, I was saying, I was saying, this is the first I've ever heard about it.
Me too, first time I've ever done.
I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna, what I want to do is get the, uh, board members to make their comments, then I'm gonna go to get comments from people that are here. Sam, any, any observation, any comment?
Um, I'm not opposed to it on face value. Um, I am curious about how it will be implemented. So you said four ev-, events?
Four Thursday night concerts.
Four Thursday night concerts to start. Uh, who will be the, um, holder of the liquor license that's, or is it just beer and wine or is it liquor as well?
It's just beer and wine.
Beer and wine? So who, who's, uh, license to sell is going to be used for this?
It is Fairly Buzzed LLC.
Who is that?
Fairly Buzzed LLC.
Yeah, do, do, is that, do they have another DBA that I might be familiar with or is it a community member that?
They, they do catering at events, so this is their business. They pull up their little wagon, set up shop and sell beer and wine.
So did they approach the town or did we approach them?
No, they, they approached us. There was, uh, I think the yoga studio, um, knew these folks and said, hey, this is a great idea. You should ask. So, um, we spitballed some ideas, um, kind of for advertising, like the first night would be ladies' night. Providing.
What does that mean?
Yeah, well, so, and this was, this was the young lady's idea. This was the young lady's idea, the owner. She said, well, we'll do some, what she called fruity cocktails, um, like mojitos, that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, then that would be liquor.
Mixed drinks.
Yep.
Well, that would be liquor.
Or is it because they're pre-canned that they would be falling into the beer and wine or?
I guess so.
Is this too specific? I, I don't know.
No, I mean, we're just asking, right now I'm just, just getting your immediate, we're hearing about this the first time.
Yeah.
Chad, did you have any observations, comments?
I am, I don't have an opinion either way. I'm more interested in what Seal and what Chief have, you know, for, for thoughts on. Introducing alcohol to an event like this.
I'm gonna hold my opinion after. Seal, you had something you want?
Well, that's why I'm here tonight. I heard it through the grapevine. Um, so. I've been working the concerts, twelve, thirteen years, long time. Again, I've never heard the request. And really, I've never really, if I go to, I, because I've worked the Castleton concerts and I'll see people drinking wine. Even though they have an open.
Container, right.
Container.
Ordinance.
Ordinance.
Yep.
They let it slip like I don't. Um, so. I'm, I'm going to ask, I thought we had an open container ordinance for our park.
We.
We have one for the whole time.
We, we do.
So, and I know that. They'll probably take, what is it, thirty yards or something like that? They were gonna rope off. I can't remember what somebody told me. Um, of course they can't leave that roped off area. My question is, where is the area? Because I don't want them anywhere near the south end of the park where we park all of our handicap folks. We take a lot of space. So if, are they gonna be in a grassy area? I, I guess there's a lot of issues around it. Number one, I just don't. So if, are they gonna be in a grassy area? I, I guess, there's a lot of issues around it. Number one, I just don't think it's the right space. We're family friendly. We have advertised ourselves as family friendly. This year, attendance is like, I think, more due to the weather than they're not being able to drink. So no, I would be incredibly opposed to this idea.
I'm giving my, any other input?
I want to know what Chief has to say.
Well, I mean, at first I was like, no, because do you open that up to, everybody brings their own deck? But now I'm aware that if you has a designated area and it's not outside of that, and it's in the controlled area only, and you can't exit that, it'd be much easier for us to monitor that when we're working.
Right.
So I'm not, under those circumstances, I'm not opposed to it as much as I would be. I wouldn't want a free-for-all, you could buy it, walk through, because then how do you tell John Doe walks through with a forty?
Yeah.
If they can't drink it in the park, if you can.
It's, my, my initial reaction when I heard it, doesn't mean I couldn't be persuaded when I heard it, was I'm going, wait a minute. Very similar to yours. Concerts in the park, very successful. I don't think of, I, I'm concerned about adding the alcohol to the equation. Quite frankly. I don't wanna be a hypocrite, because we've done alcohol when we, uh, one time we had the bourbon tasting and, and front of, and everything. But that was a special occasion just for that in a very, it wasn't Thursday night concerts in the park. I'm before I would be comfortable making a decision to do that. Also, we added this as an amended item. And I'd, I'd want this out here so that we could get more input. I think we'd have a lot of people feeling the same way Seal thinks, and I'm just wondering why. I look at what can be gained, if you, I know we can talk, hey, open your mind, Glenn, and, and see, get new people and everything, but I'm saying, what if I'm not looking for a new crowd and people? I want, the, the crowd that brings their lawn chair, sits down, feels good with bringing the kids and, and everything else. Uh, I don't want this to be something that, that could get out of hand. Rose?
Actually, my question is, Mr. Chief. Do we have, on Thursday nights, do we have a designated officer for? If we were to do something like this, would we have to get a second designated officer?
No, I still, we still have the duty officer on, so if I can cover, we bring a part timer in to cover, they work the part. And then I still have the duty officer rolling if there was an issue. I do, back on that quickly, if you did a trial run, what I do see with, I think, who Joe was talking about, I do believe that would be along the lines of like Scotch Hill Brewery, where the beers and drinks are a little more expensive because they're more craft, so I don't think the people drinking them are coming there to get drunk. They might buy a craft beer and try it. I don't see that, like the crowd of rolling a thirty pack and sitting there the whole time drinking. I don't see that happening with what, what's being proposed.
Well, this, uh, this conversation seems more subjective than objective, right? So what are the, what are the parameters for submitting a permit? How do we decide to approve it, and is it uniform for every submission? I guess that's what I would kind of look at. Uh, cause then it seems like we'd be able to pick and choose by event, and maybe that's how we wanna do it, but I just wanna call attention to that.
Again, I'm, I'm also, I agree. I also sit back here and say, we have places that sell spirits right now, to Masai's, who pays taxes. Uh, and I am not, and if someone wants to go have a few glasses of wine up, up on Scotch Hill, that's fine, and then come down and listen to the music, good. If someone wants to go to Sean's and, or uh, to the brewery in the corner. I still think there's more downside than upside myself personally to putting alcohol in the equation, and I don't have I haven't seen, I've heard just here tonight, uh, about this, but uh, I haven't seen the groundswell of people saying, you know, we, we need, we need spirits down at concerts in the park, wanna do some events. You, go ahead.
Yep, so this is scary. This is Fair Haven, and this is scary, right? This, we've never, this is not how we do that here. We've never done it before. No. And that was, that's what I expected right, right out of the gate. It's like, nope, we don't do that. I'm asking the board and the community to think not what was, but where the community is going. Hang on.
I'm not saying anything yet.
Right? So Fair Haven of 2025 is not Fair Haven of 1960. And Fair Haven of 2030 is not gonna be the Fair Haven of 2025. We have to start appealing to a greater group. We need to start appealing to groups not just in our community, because our population is dwindling. We need to start appealing to folks over at the lakes, over in Polley. We need to bring those people here, and if serving a glass of wine so they can enjoy the concerts is the way to get them here. So then they can go to Durfey's, so they can see the yoga studio. So maybe they can walk over and get a beer if the beer place is open. That's what we're trying to do. And I'm not saying let's do it from now until the end. What I'm asking is for, let's try it. Let's try something new to help our community and help our downtown. If we keep saying no to everything, we will never move forward. Cause every time something comes up, the initial response is nope, and then we drop.
Seal, you?
I have a vision for Fair Haven, too. If you wanna get a younger crowd, then you get a different band.
Right.
That's what's gonna draw it, not booms. They can get it at to Masai's, or they can get it at the brewery, or they can get it at the Fair Haven Inn. So if you wanna change that, you bring in a different band, and that, that determines your the folks who listen to that style of music. We try to bring in all the genres. We bring in rock and roll, we bring in cover bands, we bring in Celtic music. We, we try to get everything, so that one of these night concerts is gonna appeal to your particular music, musical taste. I, I just, if you wanna try it, try it at the car show. You've got an adult crowd there.
Yep.
I wanna try it at the concert.
I, I personally, just, just, you know, I think if you I look to see how this could go, and I still am concerned, and I don't wanna try it at concerts. I, I think you're messing with something that, that, that works. And I, I look it over at the dog where they're outside drinking and everything, and the neighbors are complaining from the time they open up in the summer until, until they're, they're done. And I'm saying, is, and then I come back and say, you want the crowd that comes here? I don't want the crowd that would come there and want to drink and, and say, if you wanna do that. Little, little Fair Haven is not where I'd go. Quite frankly, that's not where I'd go to go have my beer and listen. So I'm, I'm just telling you, I appreciate the, the hey, let's go out and, and try something different. This isn't the different that I'd, I'd wanna try personally. Eric?
Just is, just an observation of that whole statement. The dog is operating every night throughout the summer, but this is a once a night. I, I'm not either for or may against. I personally, I've never really attended the concerts because, like Seal said, it doesn't really appeal to my taste in music, and I'm younger. And the last one, the Army Band, the one that I did attend, was cover. And it was great. There was a lot of good songs that I know, that, or that I knew, but like, my younger counselors were like, you know this song? This is like really old. And I go, oh geez, I'm starting to be part of that population. And so I, I agree with Seal, bring in maybe some other bands locally. But I don't think it's a fair comparison of saying, this is a bar that's open nightly to a once a week concert. It's not gonna be the same rowdiness, in my opinion. I don't think it would bring that craziness, but I mean, you have all sorts of places that have beer gardens that function okay as far as I can see on the outside of it. I don't attend them myself, but I don't, I don't know.
I, I, I hear what you're saying. I, I'm just saying that I'm, I'm one of those stick in the mug people that would say, over my dead body.
Yep.
But, go ahead.
Oop, Rose had her hand up first.
Okay.
I want more details before I make it. Before I can make a judgment on my own. There is, I need more details.
You want more, more details?
So it was a comment, it's like, we don't, and I'm, I'm gonna paraphrase, like we don't want people to come into Fair Haven like that. We don't have anybody coming to Fair Haven right now. We need, we need to do something to bring people here and to spend their time here. And, and even every time we put something out there, we need to try this, it's just like, nope. Nope, that's different, that's different. We don't like different. I'm, I'm, I'm passionate about this because I see the potential in our little community. We have a great community, and I think if we could just try. I'm not asking for the world, I'm asking to just try.
I'm, and I'm saying, no.
No, well, yeah, don't try. That's where I'm at, don't try.
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying don't try, I'm just saying, don't, don't do it and concert night at the park. Go ahead.
Okay. I have about ten more questions that have nothing to do with whether or not it's going to bring young people to the community that are all logistical, that I would like to ask, but it feels like this decision is going to be made based upon how people feel about the presence of alcohol in and of itself. So, if that's the reality of the situation, I would rather not spend any more energy on it. But I think it is an idea that it has merit, should be subjected to scrutiny, and that good ideas, when scrutinized, are generally improved upon and could be enacted in a way that is to everyone's benefit and liking. So if we could just have a, just a discussion about it. That allows for.
And I believe if you're, if you wanna go drinking, go to a bar. I don't, I don't want you out. I rope off a little area and think that I've, I, I tell myself that I've just made security, cause I roped off a little area. And uh,
Has merit. I started out by thinking, you know, this, we don't want this. I'm not afraid of people who drink a glass of wine once in a while.
No, neither am I.
I'm afraid.
I'm not afraid of people who drink a bottle of beer once in a while. I don't like a drunk around. But I don't think this is going to entice drunkenness.
No, I don't either.
I mean, people who want to go get drunk, go to a bar. People who want to enjoy a glass of wine, don't mind sitting around quietly and listening to music, their kind of music. So if we have, I mean, I've been around the concerts longer than anybody. When I first started, there were nine people coming to the concert. I got it going. Again, I don't drink personally, and I, I like a little glass of Jambie before my supper in the wintertime. That's it. Just because it's never been done, I don't think we need to be afraid of it.
Seal?
I'm not afraid of it. I just don't think the concerts is the first place you try it.
Is the place.
I go to Homecoming and we do the same thing. We have a little beer, yeah, we call it a beer garden, a little area where they, they lose money every year. And that's a drinking crowd, but they all tailgate.
Did you say the Castleton does allow it?
Their Homecoming, they've done it before, but they kept losing money because everybody tailgated. I guess my, where would it be, Joe?
Behind the bus stop. In the crease, in the crease, nobody parks there.
Right where you're at, where you're at.
Do we have an aerial map of the location like we did for the, uh, the salt shed? Or could, could we maybe point it out on the aerial map that we have over here, just so that we know exactly where we're talking about?
Yeah.
Actually, I don't know how new this is, this might not.
By the cannon? Are we talking about the cannon?
Well, behind the bus stop. The cannon is here, we over here.
So that's where we parked the trailer in the daytime?
Yeah, the trailer.
Yeah, the trailer would be there. She'd be over in that grassy spot.
Well, you just took down the, had the grass going in that area there?
I uh,
I'm asking for one.
I'm gonna.
I'm asking for one, guys. Let me try.
Here's my thoughts. I'm not against trying anything. I mean, I, I know we gotta try to get things in this town, and we gotta, just because it's never been done, it's not a good excuse not to do it. If we can control it, and like you say, if one time it don't work, no more, but I'm just saying. I'm willing to try it.
I'm, I'm just one, but I'm saying.
I just wanna try, that's all I'm saying.
I'm, I'm saying, not this one. But that's just me.
You have five and four dints, though, right?
Yeah, but we can just tell them no.
What if you want over here, Joe? On this core corridor?
I didn't wanna put it inside the park, just to confuse people to what the event was. I didn't want it to be part of concerts. I wanted it to be kind of a separate.
Wait, why? It's all an area. If you're in there, you can see the concerts. You're not outside. It's controlled by the fence. You don't need.
Yeah, they're not gonna see the concert there.
You don't think so?
All trees. They're, they're at the back of it?
Alright.
Cause the gazebos. Right here. This is all parking.
Rose, you have something you wanna say?
How big of an area are you looking at? I mean, you're gonna have to have the, the trailer.
Yeah, it might be, uh, we, we we looked at it the other day. I didn't step it out, but it might be a ten by twenty, ten by thir-, maybe bigger than that. I'm excited, I might not be.
Now, are you, are they gonna bring their own tables and stuff for people to sit?
They'll bring some tables. We have a red table down, down at the other end.
I know the, I know the red table, yeah.
Yeah, we'll bring a red table in, and they'll bring their own tables.
Actually, I'll take Rich's bet and I'll, I'll raise you. I think we should give it more, I, I think we should do at least twice.
There you go, Rose.
The reason being is because give it a chance. I don't like the idea myself of having alcohol there. I, I don't. There's too much that could go wrong, but Chief said he's gonna, there's a, there's an officer there. I'm sure that they can run, but I'm sure that they can if in such a situation, kind of keep them pretty much towards that side. So if something was, somebody decided to overindulge, that.
We're not gonna let that happen. So when we cover a double bowl event, they do have a designated area.
Right.
It's the same concept, but there's less people at the park than there is at the race track.
So this is, I, I, I don't it would not be my first choice, but it's an idea, and we have so few of those.
It's, it's uh, if, the problem that we're trying to solve, I guess we're trying to solve a problem that we don't have enough people coming to concerts in the parks. I'm trying to understand why we would go out and do it, just because we never did it, is not a I've never jumped off a ledge, but it doesn't mean I wanna go do it. I, I mean, I, and I don't, I don't mean to take this the wrong way. I'm, I'm just going, I think, and I'm not against having like the night that we brought in, and I think it was Steve Sheldon and his band playing, and we, they did the different bourbons and everything, and in the middle thing. I'm not against having that kind of event. I'm not against having that kind of event that brings people to that kind of an event and you were able to buy, uh, bourbon as well. What I'm saying is, we've got something that's been going for a lot of years, Concerts in the Park. I am not sure, I don't know, I don't have a crystal ball, like no different than anyone else. But if there are people who go there and when they see the one or two times that we have alcohol, uh, right here. Will we lose some people? At the time that I think the only logic we're doing is we wanna get new people. And I think new people is, if you're taking new younger people, you're talking, I agree with what I heard about the music, just change it up a little bit and, and do that. I'm just. Not real comfortable with alcohol there for myself personally, or go ahead, I'm just one person.
I, I don't think any of these questions, whether or not it will attract people or alienate people, can be answered in this room. Nor indeed do I think they can be answered in a single event or even in two events, or perhaps even in four events. Because these types of questions can only be answered in the long term through measurement. And one thing we haven't talked about is the yardstick against, we will be measuring the performance of this new idea, which again, I think has merit. I would like, if we are to try it, to have a better understanding of how we will evaluate its success. And what success means. And I think questions of younger crowds, older crowds, I would like to shy away from and just look at attendance overall and perhaps revenues as well. So my assumption is that we will be charging a nominal fee to the vendor for their participation at the event. Is that, more or less, they'll pay a twenty dollar license fee or some, something to, to set up.
Yeah, they'd have to pay the ten dollar.
Ten dollars? So does the concert committee or the town make any percentage of sales on the alcohol at this event? Is there a scenario in which the concert committee or the town does make some percentage of sales? Or some larger fee than ten dollars on this type of event? Or, or has that been discussed or considered?
Uh. Didn't hash it out really, I'm, you know, that always pops up, can we get a percentage? Um, no, because we didn't, we haven't tried it at all, I don't know what attendance would look like. Um, we would expect that if there are more folks over there, um, having a beer, they might go over and have a hot dog. They go around and maybe grab a hot dog and come back, so that way they can drink and eat. Um, cause they're not selling food, they're gonna eat, which was a stipulation, we're not doing food, you have to eat what's there.
And as someone who hasn't attended these concerts since, I'm gonna say two thousand and six. We sell hot dogs, what else do we sell? Who makes the revenues from those sales?
Hot dogs and popcorn.
So does water.
So does soda and water.
The locals record to the concerts, pay for the concerts.
Okay.
So concerts cost a lot of money.
Of course.
Okay. So the town gives us, I think you increased it, was it to nine thousand dollars, Joe? Bands cost, that's just, throughout, a band costs twelve hundred dollars. The Soundman costs six hundred dollars, the Porta Potties costs a couple of hundred dollars. That's every night that, that costs, so that's almost over two thousand dollars. We have nine, that's eighteen thousand dollars. Town gives us nine. We have to sell fifty fifty, we solicit sponsorships, we sell food, that's what puts the concerts on. When you talk about how you measure concerts. A lot of variables.
Yeah.
I don't know how you can narrow those variables, weather number one. The band.
Sure.
Uh, the temperature, even if it's, if it, if it's, if it's night late tonight, it'll fill the park. And if it's a good band, if it's a bad band, we'll still fill the park because they wanna be up in, under, you know, in the park. But if.
But we are measuring attendance.
The way we measure attendance, we count. In the church, it's about a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty-five. And unfortunately, we've had to have two in the church. We make no money. In fact, we give away money because we give everybody cold water because it's hotter than good glazes in that church. And we'll donate something to the church for allowing us to use their facility. When we, you know, it will sound funny, but we, we did it for about three years. We give a red ticket, we used to count the red tickets. The closer. The number to the attendance is usually what the fifty fifty is. So if we give out two hundred and ninety-five dollars, I can bet you there's three hundred people in the crowd, cause that's how close it comes. And that's how we measure attendance, by the num, the amount of fifty fifty.
My, my question would be, we have a group of Concerts in the Park workers and, and I call, I, I don't know if you're a formal committee, but if you're, I think you're a committee.
Fred, Fred, Tony and I are.
What does, what does, my other, what I don't know, when, by just adding this and not having it on the agenda item beforehand. Is what does the concerts, how does the Concerts in the Park Committee feel about us arbitrarily making a decision to sell alcohol? Uh, at concerts, at four concerts in the park?
I get, I can tell you, I wasn't happy when somebody called me and said, hey, did you just read on Facebook that they wanted?
That, that's, that's the, the other.
Did somebody post on Facebook?
Somebody posted it somewhere on Facebook, I thought. That's what I was told. I don't do Facebook, you know, I don't.
Yeah, no, I don't either.
I don't do social media.
But, but I'm, but I'm just saying.
Right, somebody called.
Whole point is, I, we, whole point is, we wanna do, and I, and, and don't get me wrong, Joe. I know you wanna think out of the box and I know we wanna do things to improve. I'm not against that. What I am against, we're just looking for new people and I just upset the majority of the Concerts in the Park people who do the, do the work. And they all quit, so not only did I not get more people, I gotta find people or go pay for people to go work concerts in the park. Cause they don't like the idea that I'm selling alcohol there now.
So, so I did call Fred before I brought this to the board.
Okay.
And Fred's response was, as long as it's outside of the fence, he didn't care, it wasn't his problem. Great. If Fred would've said, no way, I am not on board, I would've not even thought about this. Cause Fred is the man.
And, well, but he's, he's one, he is one person, he's not the decision maker. He, even though, I bet if we talked to Fred, he'd tell you he was the decision maker.
He tells me that every time I talk to him.
But I, but we have, we have a group and, and I, my, my concern is, what's the group?
Player, me.
Yeah. And if the group's saying, not a problem.
Well, yeah, it sounds like the group is split.
Yeah, I, I.
Well.
Oh, tonight's, this is the first I'd ever heard about it, was tonight.
This first I've heard about.
Before that, I had no, I didn't, I didn't even hear a rumor anywhere. I'm, I'm willing to try it, but everybody has gotta be willing to try it.
See him?
Rich, that is a perfect segue to my next question. If we are anticipating that this change will bring new audience members to the concerts, how do we intend to market that this change has occurred? Meaning, how are we gonna let people know that we're selling this?
Yeah, um, so the young lady, she already has a, um, media package prepared. But she wasn't, I hope she didn't post because she wasn't supposed to do that. But yeah, we're, we're, we're ready to go, just in case the board said yes.
The, the young lady in this case being the owner of the LLC, was it Fairly Buzzed?
Fairly Buzzed.
Fairly Buzzed, okay.
It's not just bring new people, we're gonna add to the people that are already there.
If, I.
For those who may want.
I don't think this is.
I think, I think the risk is greater than you lose people, but when I, when I see that, I'll probably go.
Why would you lose people? Well, what's your thought process and why do you think people would not come? If it's just alcohol offered in this designated area?
The, my comfort level, cause I think I'm trying, I'm looking at the chief saying that, we're having people sashaying through with their, with their tall boys. At the same time, because, well, I, and we do, we run into that occasionally, I think we had once. That we had to deal with a situation involving alcohol and a person who might've had more than they should've. I'm just going, why am I building myself up for more of that? I, I'm just, that.
We all get confused by one incident turns you off completely?
No, I, no, with me, I'm, I'm looking, quite frankly, uh, I'm, I can't make Thursday night concerts in the park because I'm already committed somewhere. So I'm not there, so how you end up isn't gonna make a difference of me going or not going. I can tell you though, if I was going. I wouldn't mind going myself, I wouldn't bring my grandchildren, I wouldn't bring my younger children with air, with, with. Alcohol at the park.
I think the way that, the way they're talking about design, that it's a small group controlled. If you're gonna experiment, that's the way to do it. I would be totally against being able to take that beer or wine and go sit in my chair on the middle of a park. Because then it's, we can't regulate it, the people that sell it can't regulate it. And then it opens up to what I talked about, people want it with their own, because then it's hard to argue what's what.
And unless you.
Children are a lot of beer gardens.
To me, so it's no different than when the Scotch Hill Brewery was running the one out in Parkmont, right? Same concept, as you come out of Scotch Hill Brewery, you sat in the town's thing out in the middle, same concept, it's controlled, we've never had any issues with that.
We don't get a big crowd either. So when we had our wine tasting, um, the first one went really well. Um, and then we had public, so I'm not against drinking. I worked in a bar. Not a whole lot of people know that, but I did. And, and so I'm not against drinking, I'm not against that at all. What I am against is. Putting it, testing it out at the concerts. And that, I just don't think, I think if you wanna test it, you make it a, an event solely about. You can have a band, you can do it on a Sunday afternoon or a Saturday afternoon, we don't have Sunday Bluebells anymore.
I do think what Joe's proposing is growing on what's already an established, well-attended event.
Where are we gonna park more people? That's what I wanna know, where are we gonna park more people? My husband is out there parking people and he's going, okay, we don't want, I mean. He was having a hard time parking people with three hundred people there. It's really hard when there's six hundred people there. Which is why I said, if this is gonna take up any parking space whatsoever. That's, that, especially at the south end of the park where people, um, who can, who have issues walking.
Is three, is three hundred a number that's representative of what you've been seeing this year?
This year, only because of the weather.
But there's been.
I mean, on a good year, it's six hundred to a thousand.
Six hundred to a thousand.
It's gonna be a nice night Thursday.
It's gonna be a warm night, um, we have a new band, so we're hoping for a big crowd.
So, so.
Because that pays our bills.
I, I think we're starting to. Repeat and get this, what's your pleasure? For members?
I'm willing to try it. But that's just me.
Could I make a suggestion, maybe to temper the, the, the concern, maybe just approve one or two, as Roseanne said, not all four? That way the gave, it gives the board the control to say, look, we said two and that's it.
My, my concern with that framing. And I think I may have already expressed this, is that we are saying, try it and see, but we have not established what it is that we are trying to see. Is it in, is it an increase in the attendance? If so, what are we looking for? Can we set goals?
How do you measure success?
Yes, I, and, and because then it just leaves the door open for us to return to this after two and say, well, we didn't like it, but on what basis, we won't.
And, and I have trouble making a decision on, we haven't even agreed where it's gonna be.
So also, I, I guess, my thinking is, let's say this does get approved. I would imagine the town, if it goes horribly wrong and everyone gets up and leaves and now we have no concert goers. Where there's a situation that is disorderly and we're like, this is a terrible idea. I imagine we reserve the right to revoke a permit once we've issued it?
Oh, of course.
Okay.
What's, but what you, what I, my question is, like if you called a question now. Haven't heard, heard where it could be, could be down on the grass on the other end, could be over on the other side. Could be, uh, uh.
The follies are a place.
I, I, well, it, it could be up on this end of the park where you've got the parking places outside the fence and the grass on this end, on the north end. No, I, I, I don't know. But I'm, but I just don't know what I'm, I'm just throwing it out there and say, well, yeah, kinda go, go do it.
So the, the designated location would be behind the bus stop by the pine trees? That would be cordoned off and it's, again, twenty, I'm gonna say twenty or thirty by thirty or forty, I don't know the exact square foot.
And, and the concerts, uh, stuff that you put there, that won't be in your way?
There's nobody parks there, it's all.
Not on the grass.
Okay.
It's always empty.
It'd be in the grass.
Okay.
The only people that park anywhere near that is, are empty.
Right.
So.
They're usually right on the, right on the.
Right on that, they're right, right at the gate.
Right. I pull my truck in there and unload everything.
So we have a location. I'm hearing everything from one to four, the proposal came in, they wanna do four. Yeah, are you, I'm.
Is that the remaining number of concerts for the summer?
Yes.
Yes, it's the, so, uh, if. Someone wanted to make a motion. To do this. We can get a motion in a, in a second, we probably, I think we'd beat it to death, but I'm, go ahead.
Oh, ten dollars is what we always, or what has been set as the standard charge. The ROI on selling alcohol to a captive audience is going to be presumably high if it's successful. Which would, to me, suggest that we might want to adjust that pricing, especially since, and I understand we wouldn't wanna take a percentage, that seems irregular. But charging a higher fee may be in order. Um, I would like to consider asking for, perhaps for sales data from Fairly Buzz. Or, or maybe just doing our own sort of research to determine what the right number is, if it's not a little higher than ten dollars for an event. Um, and the other thing that, uh, that's called to mind for me, I, I, why I was asking, who approached who in this scenario? Did we go to Fairly Buzz or did Fairly Buzz come to us? It, my thinking is, and as someone who has also worked as a bartender and who has catered as someone who worked at a bar. N- knowing that there is the opportunity for any brick and mortar establishment that has their beer, wine, liquor license to also. File for a temporary permit to serve at an event like this as well. Um, that maybe there's an opportunity to work with a local business, a bar that already exists, the brewery perhaps. So that they might furnish the event with alcohol, which to me is in the interest of the community. Um, I, I, and also I think would send a strong message to the local businesses that work downtown. That we are interested in this being to their benefit as well as to the concert goers. Um, especially given that there has been some discussion and perhaps some, um, uh, pushback around food trucks as of late. I want to pay attention to that and, and maybe be a bit proactive about it.
Fairly Buzz is not, is not one of our concert supporters to massizes.
Right, we have, we have, on so many levels, you're right. We, we have, uh, people who pay to, to support the concerts.
Gives three pizzas every week feeds a band.
To answer your other question, it'd be, uh, we, we get a stipend from the fireworks people, a thousand dollars a year. The RC Flyers, we just had them, give us a thousand dollars. I, I'm, I'm not saying that's what it should be, but it wouldn't be out of the realm that we, that we do something like that.
Or the vineyard, or, you know.
So. We're back again to, is there a motion? And, uh, to do this. And the motion would be to do this, it sounds like the request was for four. Have you modified that, that, that request for four?
I, I think, I think we could bump it to two and, and to make people more comfortable. Cause nobody wants the world here, we're just trying to see what we can do to help our community.
One more point of clarification, because I, I'm not sure that I can say with certainty. So it sounds like it's a beer and wine only, but we also made reference to cocktails, so I'm not sure where we fell on what they'll be served.
We will make sure it's only beer and wine, cause you're right, that is cock, that is liquor and we don't wanna have liquor. That was a, that was explicit in the conversation.
So entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we try it for two weeks. And if it don't work, it don't work.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Um, I will second the motion to approve the license to serve, uh, at the concerts in the park on a conditional basis for two events.
Any other discussion?
Provisional, let's say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. No?
Abstain.
Abstain. We don't have.
Can we do that?
You can't. It, they, we don't have three votes, so the motion didn't carry, so we won't be doing the liquor license. Let's move on.
Although I appreciate the good conversation.
No, it was a good, good discussion.
It was a lot, but yeah.
Good discussion.
Good discussion.
Two minutes.
Is it, is it majority of the quorum or majority of the votes?
Quorum of the board, right, so three.
You need three. Now, I am, to get a decision, you need three of the five members. Two minutes for public comment.
Go ahead, Sam, go ahead. I was really excited. Fairhaven had such a great week. We invited visitors from the governor, governor, which is always, it's like, and it was so fun to see Vanessa Hampton, you might have met her as Vanessa Kinner.
I did, and I saw her as well.
And they're the owners of the land.
Mm-hmm.
So I said, Vanessa, what are you doing here? And she said, well, I own the land. And I said, well, I'll be. But it was a really nice, a nice event. Um, lots of politicians. And so, uh, you know, I, I was just happy they came to Fairhaven. And then, of course, the building, um, the National Guard building. My question, I guess it's not a comment, it's a question. We have, the Historical Society has marble posts at the old building, at the old place. And it's got yellow tape around it, um, fenced in, but those are the posts that if somebody runs over one of the ones in the park, those are, and they have. So those, so I wouldn't, I guess I'm saying, is there any way we can keep them there? Is the land still gonna be available? Uh, is it still town land? Is that land gonna be sold? What should the Historical Society do in terms of those marble posts, which are really heavy?
Oh, so they can stay there? There's no plans on.
Selling.
On, on getting rid of that land. At least not right now.
Good thing.
Can I add to that there, Joe, that also the IBC who was looking for storage space, I think they've been told that downstairs, or we were waiting for DPW to move, we thought where there might be some space. Because it's, if they thought it was easier to store.
Can I touch on the, the topic? I know it's not on the agenda, but, um, there are two storage containers down at the playground. Half of one of those consort, storage containers is, sorry. Um, is earmarked for IBC or, well, for IBC. So I know there's a bunch of Christmas trees downstairs that IBC wanted access to. Those can be huffed up. Um, and then any other, um, treasures that you want to store.
Who just need to get a lock for it so that nobody gets into it, so.
Yep. So that's, that's.
Well, I think it's tough for the IBC to take a little bit of, I mean, we've been looking at what we're going to do and what we're not going to do in terms of, um, decorations, because it's mostly the things that we decorate the park with. The flags come from the American Legion. We don't store those, the, they burn them for us after they're taken out of the park. Um, but the sticks for the, things like that, Christmas trees, anything that, because we really decorate all seasons, so that's what it is.
Was there any other, yes, Rose?
So, I had a couple of things. I wanted to thank Joe and the DPW for being, getting right on the little ditch there in front of Cloud Nine, um, there, where I fell. And I mentioned it to them Friday and it was done today, so I thank you very much. I also wanted to mention, I got my tax bill. And I.
I thought they were going down. Somebody told me they were going down.
Mine went down, twenty-two dollars a quarter.
I have to say that I was pretty impressed. Because where the school taxes went up, not, not as much as they could have been and probably will in the future, but they did go up. But my tax bill as a whole went down over a hundred dollars for the year. So, good job, guys. And good job to all the people, you know, all our department heads. Of course, he's gone. All our department heads who kept the budgets. Were your ears ringing?
I'm gonna bring my tax bill and say, how come mine went up?
Mine, mine went down.
And Mary Hills went up, three hundred dollars or something.
Homestead, but I don't get Homestead.
I, I don't know. All I know is that.
The Homestead definitely changed on.
It could be the ones who didn't get it because they didn't get the Homestead.
Homestead seemed to have changed a lot, went down, which would put the bill higher.
And, and, and I never got Homestead, so mine actually, eighty-eight dollars went down.
I just, I wanted to give credit where credit was due.
Twenty-two dollars a quarter, went down. Good. Any other comments? Okay, parking lot. Seeing nothing on parking lot? Board roundtable. Sam?
Congratulations, uh, I think in particular to Joe, but let's say to all of us on a press conference that went off beautifully and, uh, I think really, uh, reflected our town well.
Yeah, you're wonderful, Joe. That, that and all the people, the police department, the DPW, the, the folks that were, the whole supporting cast did an amazing job for that.
Yep. Is there someplace we can see it?
The press con?
See it, the press conference.
There was news media there and there were reports, but I don't know if it was recorded in its entirety.
Maybe YouTube somewhere.
Yeah.
Channel three or channel five?
We'll have to get you there next time.
Ask them, they.
Anything else, Sam?
I don't know what's picked, do you think?
Rich?
I think you got it.
I have nothing.
No, maybe it's not, I'll be good.
Chad?
Well, I'll echo that. I think it was, uh, great to see Fairhaven in, uh, good light on the news. It was a good event to attend. Um, uh, you know, the, thank you to, to Joe and, uh, you know, the, the cast and crew. We saw Terry there and, and Nate and, and his guys were there. It was, it was good. Uh, Chief and, and, you know, your, your presence there and, uh, you know, I, I do want to, I guess, just clarify, because I think there was some, uh, online swirl after the fact that, uh, you know, we were starting some big project on the taxpayers' dime and, you know, we didn't notify anybody, but, uh, it's, it's really just about, um, getting, uh, monies to smaller communities to build infrastructure around projects that might happen in the future, not, not, uh, a project we have slated now, so. Um, really big day for all small communities in Vermont. Unrelated, uh, but related to housing. Curious about whether or not we have, uh, anything in an ordinance that I haven't read yet on houses that are in disrepair. Seeing some houses that are boarded up and missing pieces off of them and not necessarily holding junk on the property, uh, but certainly, uh, potentially hazardous, uh, buildings. You know, you think about vacant buildings and what happens or could happen in them. Uh, wondering if we have an ordinance on that, and if not, is that something that this board would want to entertain?
I don't think we have an ordinance about abandoned homes. Um, the, the select board has very, very broad power when it comes to safety and the health of the community, which we don't, we haven't flexed that muscle ever. So we really don't know how to use it, but I think that would be a, a potential avenue. I know Rutland does, they, they've stepped in on certain properties, so. I don't have a good answer, but I can ask the lawyer and see if he has an idea.
All right.
Sounds good.
Good. I have just, uh, one item. Heard, um, we talked, uh, back at the end of June about the water and sewer bills and, and the potential proposal of emailing out the, the bill and, and I just, uh, I got, uh, some feedback, uh, where, um, this person was reading that and, uh, seemed, seemed to be, uh, uh, confused that, uh, we were, it would cost them more if they, if it was emailed, uh, through. And I, I think it's because we got talking about, is it five dollars, is it one dollar, and, and, and we didn't go. So, so I, I'm, I, I told them that I was pretty sure it wasn't to cost more and, um, and that there's more, there's more to follow, uh, here on that, because I, when I look back at those minutes, we said we put it on a future agenda to, to kind of wrap that up, and with the next water bill, I think, well, it doesn't, isn't due for another month, month, month and a half. Uh, so maybe we, we need to try to sneak that on, on, on an agenda to, yeah, if we're moving forward, I think communicating what we're doing or talking about that would need to be done. And I just want to echo the great job by Joe, that, that the staff here. What I was also very impressed with is our delegation from Montpelier, uh, which was in full force down here uh, supporting the efforts that we're, we're doing. Uh, we've got a pretty good team up there working with the governor and lieutenant governor. It was, it was nice to see that, that group, uh, so involved with Fairhaven.
Yeah, you've been the lieutenant governor, right?
Yes.
Lieutenant governor, yeah.
So, uh, very nice. Okay, uh, moving right along to the financial reports.
Just a second. We gotta find it. Go.
Make a motion to approve the payroll warrant of forty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-eight cents.
I will second that motion.
Seconded by Sam. All those in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve the general warrant of a hundred and thirty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars and ninety-five cents. I'll second that.
Rich is seconding that? All those in favor?
Aye. And our checkbook sits at, uh, sits in the negative, ninety-five thousand four hundred and nine dollars and sixty-five cents.
But taxpayer money is coming in.
It's coming, it's less negative than it was last time.
Pay tax bills.
And I don't see an executive session, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for coming to the meeting.